All right, well, since we're all here, welcome to the August 24th Select Board meeting. Please note that in accordance with the emergency orders announced by Governor Charlie Baker to protect public health during COVID-19 outbreak, this Select Board meeting will not be open to the public for physical attendance, and the Select Board members are meeting online via Zoom web conference. This meeting is being live streamed and cable broadcast by Eastern Community Access Television, Comcast 98, Verizon 23, and on ECAP's website, www.easterncat.org. If you're watching this at home and you have a question or a comment, you can email Michael Blanchard, mblanchard@eastern MA.us, or pose your question on the Q and A feature of the Zoom portal. Please remember to include your name and street address for our minutes. At this time, I'd like to ask each Select Board member to state their names to ensure that we have a quorum, starting with you, Craig.
Craig Barger.
Tom Brusart.
Chuck King.
Mark Lamb.
And I'm Dottie Folgenetti, so thank you. I want to turn this over to Connor for our first agenda item.
Sure, so thank you, Dottie, and thank you to the folks who are tuning in. So our first item tonight is the formal announcement of Chief Kevin Partridge's planned retirement from the Eastern Fire Department. So it's always bittersweet to make an announcement like that, but it's a great milestone for Kevin. So the chief's final day in his permanent position with the Fire Department will be October 21st of this year. He's served the town of Easton in the department with distinction since he joined in early 2012, and he's served as a critical member of Easton's leadership team throughout his tenure. It's difficult to put into words everything that a fire chief is responsible for, and all the work that they do, particularly in Kevin's case, in a position where he's also the Emergency Management Director. But before introducing Kevin to speak about his retirement on his own terms, I wanted to kind of touch on and summarize for the board and the public some of the major accomplishments that the chief has led his department to since 2012. Just really focusing on the 10,000-foot view and the chief's tenure. He has been a really effective and aggressive advocate for his department, both for operating and for capital funds. Under his tenure, the positions lost in the Great Recession have been restored. There's been tremendous capital improvements in safety and technology and the vehicle fleet and buildings, obviously, that's most pronounced recently with the complete renovation of Fire Station 2, which I believe was first built in the 30s. Just major, major accomplishments there. Kevin launched the SERC team, which is now a mainstay at most major community events, whether that's, you know, conducting huge town meetings off-site for, you know, 90-plus-million-dollar schools that will educate children in this town for the next half-century, or assisting with pandemic response and safe elections during COVID. That was an initiative brought to Easton by Kevin. It's been a priority for the chief his entire career, but I know also exemplified in Easton professionalization of our expert firefighters. He's dramatically expanded Easton's ambulance services and capabilities. And of course, this year, almost inescapably, there's focus on his role as the Emergency Management Director. I don't think I've ever called Kevin so much as the past six months during the confrontation of coronavirus, and I would not have wanted to, and I don't know if I could have done it without him there. It was pretty surreal and serendipitous that, I think it was March 10th was the day that Governor Baker, with very little advance notice, called for a press conference, I think it was a Tuesday, and because it was budget season, I believe by happenstance for Fire Chief, the Health Director and the Superintendent were in my office as the governor went live to announce a state of emergency in response to COVID. And thank God they were all there, because like everyone else, there is a collective sense of severity and immediacy with the task at hand, and just working through and having Kevin there at the table and by my side to prepare for an all-hands-on-deck with the entire leadership of the town, first thing the next morning, working through the night on the agenda, working through the night on making sure that I was hitting the appropriate agenda topics for what was going to basically be and continues to be a collective effort for an ongoing emergency response, which is obviously something none of us have really had happen in our career, but particularly, you know, in my case, I was happy and the town was so fortunate to have the chief here for that. So I'm saying this as a long way, characteristically, to say thank you to the chief for his service to the profession, to the organization in Easton and the community, and to express how thankful I am, as I know so many in Easton are, and to say that, Kevin, I'm personally indebted to you as a confidant over the past many years and a leader that I've been very fortunate to work with and someone who I've been able to learn so much from. And before I do what I always do and pull up some numbers, because I think they tell a pretty cool story of Kevin's tenure, I wanted to just, I wish it was in person, but present a small, small gift. It's hard to see on this, it looks nicer in person, but Kevin, I don't know if you want this on Bay Road, or if you want to take it home, whatever your pleasure, but this kind of spoke to me about my experience working with you, not just as a leader, but I obviously worked alongside you. I actually started, I think, the same week you did here, many, what feels like a lifetime ago, in a very different job, and the entire time we worked together, you have been persistent and habitual in your pursuit of doing the right thing and doing the best you can, not only to proudly represent yourself, but always, always, always looking out for the department. And so I thought that this quote was apropos, which says, "We are what we repeatedly do. Excellence then is not an act, but a habit." And I think that speaks to who you are, not just as a professional, but as a person.
What is behind there, Connor, under that?
It's a dictionary page.
Okay.
I like words, I guess, I don't know. But I thought that that speaks to who you are and who I've come to know in the past almost nine years. You are habitually excellent in your pursuit of everything. You've always, always, always put your job in doing the right thing for the community first, without ego. You've never been a shrinking violet with anything that required some confrontation or conflict, and I am better off for it, and I'm sure a lot of other folks would say the same. And before I actually give a few of those other folks the chance to talk about their experience working with you, I just wanted to pull up for the board and for the public to really put into perspective how much the department has grown under your leadership. We pulled the numbers from the last full year before you were chief and the last complete year on your watch, and it really speaks volumes to just the growth of fire service and ambulance service. In 2011, there was just shy of 1,300 ambulance runs in Easton. Last year, there was just shy of 2,500, so Tom will come get me if I say nearly doubled, but it nearly doubled in your tenure. At the same time, our reliance on other communities for mutual aid has dropped to less than a quarter of what it once was, which is a good proxy for the frequency with which we need others to come to the assistance of our residents. During the same period, we almost tripled ambulance revenue, and that's because staff increased, and that's because when you came here, we had one paramedic ambulance and one in reserve, and you're leaving the department with three fully stocked paramedic ambulances and a staff to run them. Fire Department obviously does more than just ambulance calls. The calls for service in general have gone up from just shy of 2,800 to nearly 3,600 in the nine years that you've been here. The department has grown, recovering the positions lost in the last terrible recession from '34 to '43, and not only has the quantity grown, but the quality of the professionalism of fire service continues to advance. At that time, 53% of firefighters were paramedics, now 91% of the department are paramedic certified. So I have a risk of talking all night and going on and on, and I'll kind of leave it there, but I thought that those were really incredible statistics to, kind of at a quantitative perspective to my more personal experience, working alongside of you and benefiting, working with you. So again, and I can't say it enough, thank you for everything you've done for the town and everything you've done to help me and my service to the town, the board and our service to the town. And I know I don't, I'm not only speaking for myself, there's a few others who I think can speak to their work with you as well, and I would ask that we start moving a couple of them in to say hello and wish you well. So I'd like to ask Chief Gary Sullivan to pop in and say a few words about working with you.
Good evening, Select Board members. Thank you very much for having me, give me the opportunity to say a few words about Chief Partridge. Chief, I want to congratulate you on your impending retirement this October. I understand you'll be staying on for a period of time until a successor chief is selected. I just want to tell you how much I've appreciated our friendship this past five years, that we've worked closely together in our respective roles as chiefs. You are a true professional, and you've shown tremendous leadership as Easton's Fire Chief these past several years, so kudos to you.
Thanks, Chief.
Congratulations and best wishes in your retirement. We'll still be working together for a period of time, so I look forward to the next time we go out to lunch, you're buying, and I'll talk to you soon.
Thank you, Chief, I appreciate it very much.
Thanks, Chief. Just a couple of other folks who I know, particularly in COVID times, have worked with you quite a bit. Also, DPW Director Dave Field popping in.
Dave, you're muted.
Oh. Hi, Dave. Thanks for having me on, Connor, and good evening, Select Board Chief. Chief and I started about the same time, about eight and a half years ago. We were both introduced as new employees at the Select Board meeting at the time. Little did I know then that I'd be this jealous of Chief today. Police, Fire, and Public Works tend to work closely together, both on a day-to-day basis and during those large-scale emergency situations. During my time working with Kevin, it was very clear that Kevin's extremely professional, knowledgeable, and dedicated to his craft, somebody you can always count on at all times. I've learned a lot working with Kevin, especially alongside him during his role as Emergency Management Director. God knows we've had enough events, and I appreciate all the help and support he's provided me with through the years. While I'm still a little jealous, Kevin has truly earned and is very deserving of his upcoming retirement. Kevin, I, along with the entire DPW, wish you a long and healthy retirement. Congratulations, Chief.
Thank you, Dave, appreciate that. Two great guys to have by your side during an emergency, thanks.
I think we have a couple of other people, I think one is missing. Oh, no, one is Town of Easton. We have the Director of Health and Community Services, Kristin Kennedy here as well. I know we've all been working together quite a bit, so I thought Kristin would have a good perspective here.
So Kevin, when Connor sent out the notice of your retirement, it brought me back to 2012 when you first joined us. I didn't realize some of the other people joined us that year, because I've been here forever. My first collaboration with you was putting a program in place to deal with the Commonwealth's ban on residential sharps for others, those are the needles that our residents depend on for so many things. While the change in the law didn't require the town to do anything except to get the word out, I found out that I was going to have the honor of working with a professional that shared my belief that we could do better and we should do better. Together, we put together a program that still stands today that addresses this gap that was left by the state, not because we had to, but because it was the right thing to do. And that's my experience working with you, Kevin. It's always about doing the right thing. You've been there to partner at every turn, from mercury spills to flu clinics that have doubled as emergency preparation drills, to sharing resources and staff, to scooping ice cream. As the daughter of a retired career firefighter, I know that you could not have given so generously to us what you have without the support of your family. So I also want to take the time tonight to thank them for so generously sharing you with us and with me, because honestly, I can't imagine doing what we have done for the past few months without you. You've truly been a wonderful partner, and I would not want to do a pandemic with anyone else. From welcoming me to the EOC in those first crazy days, to being by my side for those late-night notifications to Connor, I will truly miss knowing that you have my back. I mean, who's going to call up Massport and yell at them for calling me at midnight over things their supervisors weren't able to handle? Who's going to text me and tell me that I don't have enough light during a Zoom meeting? In all seriousness, Kevin, I can't thank you enough for all that you have so generously given and shared with me. It's truly been an honor and a privilege to work with you, and I wish you a bright, healthy, relaxing, and joy-filled retirement.
Thank you, Kristin, appreciate it very much, been a pleasure.
Thank you, Kristin. And then I invited one other person to pop in, and it's not always just the EMA colleagues. It's a big part of the Fire Chief's job is labor management, which is, you know, inherently a give-and-take relationship, but it's something that the chief, I know, has worked hard on, and I know that Chris has as well. And so I'm happy to have Chris Mills, who's the VP of IAFF Local 2790, pop in to say a few words as well. Chris, thanks for being here.
Hi, hi, everyone. Connor, thanks for involving the local Select Board members, thanks for having me. Chief, as you know, the fire service chief relationship can sometimes be difficult. I'm sure Chief Sullivan can attest to that too, but it's a family. And I don't know about your family, but my family and I bicker sometimes. We always tend to get to what I like to say the word yes. And over the past few years, we've been able to watch you help us grow, become more professional, and quite honestly, get our back on a lot of things. And on behalf of Local 2790, we'd like to thank you. I can't really be sarcastic just yet, because I know I'm going to see you next week. So we will look forward to the last few months and see what the future brings us. So thanks very much for getting our back, Chief, we appreciate it.
Chris, thank you very much, and thanks to the Local 2790, I appreciate it.
So Chief, I monopolized your own announcement long enough, so why don't we turn it over to you and whatever you, however, whatever terms you want to put this on.
Well, I think you made it a little harder for me to be able to do this.
It's my job.
But I thank you very much. A few kind words, I appreciate it very much, and to all of you who came on, thank you. I appreciate it, it truly has been a pleasure to work with you. I have put some thoughts together, I hope you don't mind, Dottie, I take a little time to express them, and thanks to the board for letting me do that. Hopefully, I can get through it okay. So this has been a bittersweet time for me, thinking about this after 36 years in the fire service profession that I've loved and enjoy. I'm making the decision to retire. I'm retiring not just because I've reached the point that I'm eligible, but because I feel it is the best time for me personally to be able to enjoy retirement with my wife while we're both healthy. Everyone's goal, you want to live a long time in retirement, and I think stepping back from a 24/7 job is a good first step. I have devoted my life to the fire service in being a fire chief, and I have given a commitment that went well beyond your typical eight-to-four hours. It will be difficult to let that go, but I think sleeping through the night without a radio wake me up is going to be a good start. Over my 36 years in the fire and EMS service, I've had a lot of good days, plenty of bad days and sad days, as we know. In most cases, people are calling us because they have a problem, and we usually make it better for them, but there are plenty of times when the outcome is not what we hoped for, of what we trained for, and sometimes that is difficult. Unfortunately, we don't forget those, but we deal with them, because that is what we do, that's what we train for, and that's the job. It has been a job that I'm very proud to have served in, and I have been blessed to have it. I'd like to stop by thanking all the members of Eastern Fire Department, who I have worked with over the past eight years. They truly are professionals, and I'm proud to be their chief. To the officers on the department who I've worked with to make the department better and improve the service we provide, and everything I've done, I always ask the question, is this going to help the citizens of Easton? I thank each of them for their support and commitment to the department, to Captains Bly, DeZallo, Green, Malone, Riendo, Lieutenants Carroll, Healy, Fralich, and McCormick. You have been very supportive and good officers for me. I appreciate everything you do and the support you have given over the years. I've had the pleasure of promoting all the current offices on the department and have hired 25 of the 42 members on the department in my eight years. It was a pleasure to see each of you sworn in to your position at your swearing-in ceremony, something I'm happy to have implemented here in Easton, not only for the officers, but for the new firefighters we hire. It gives them and their families a feeling of pride to belong to this great department. I thank each and every member of the department for their support. Here in Easton, we have a great leadership team, starting with the Town Administrator, Connor Reed. He's been a pleasure to work with and is a phenomenal leader and boss. Connor reminds me of myself when I first became a fire chief at age 27. He's energetic and ambitious. Connor is very talented and a smart person, and the town's very lucky to have him as the Town Administrator, and I've enjoyed and been honored to work with him. The rest of the Public Safety Team, Police Chief Gary Sullivan, Deputy Chief Keith Boom, DPW Director Dave Field, Building Commissioner Kevin Greiner, Health and Community Service Director Kristin Kennedy, and Assistant Town Administrator Mike Blanchard, and also the former Chief Craycheck and Commissioner Mark Tribbet. They have been awesome to work with over these many years, no matter what kind of emergency we face, from blizzards to hurricanes to COVID-19. We teamed up and handled the mission. I can't thank them all enough for their true professionalism and friendship they've shown me. To the other department heads and supervisors who may not be on the front lines during the emergency, they certainly are part of the team who make, who make up and run the town so smoothly that most of the people don't see. My sincere appreciation and thanks go to Finance Director Wendy Nightingale, Treasurer Linda Hawks, Town Clerk Daniels Segard, IT Director Mike Deltono, Planning Director Stephanie Danielson, Superintendent Dr. Cabral, Dave Twombly, Assessor Robbie Alfred, Library Director Uma Hymeth, Water Operations Manager Jack Marsh, and the DPW Crew, Jay Consation, Todd Texera, Greg Swan, and Rich Tanny, all of who I've had the opportunity to work with in many different capacities. You're all wonderful people, and it's been a pleasure to work with you, with you all. And to all the employees who I've had the pleasure to interact with, thank you very much for your support. Dr. Henry Crowley has been a great, is a great asset to this department, and I want to thank him and thank him for being a great friend to me. I thank him for his leadership and his mentorship and a confidant in times when I needed to talk about our EMS system. He is truly an asset to the department as our service medical director, and I thank Dr. Crowley. To Jason and Chris Mills, my compliments to both of you for your professionalism and respect to me in our duties as, in your duties as the Union President and Vice President. Working with you both has been a pleasure, and I think you will agree that together we were able to work through items that needed addressing in a professional manner and work to provide the best for health and safety of all our firefighters. To the Select Board, you've been very supportive of me, and I want to add that I really wish we were doing this in person, because doing it by Zoom doesn't add that. Little personal thanks, and when the time is right, I will, I will get by to see all of you. The town is extremely fortunate to have such good people serve the town, like all of you. My sincere thanks go to Select Board members, Dottie Folgenetti, Craig Barger, Chuck King, Mark Lamb, Tom Brusart, for your confidence in me as your Fire Chief and for supporting me throughout the years. To the previous members who also supported me, I thank you. I believe that I have served you well, and I'm leaving you with a Fire Department that I'm very proud of, is well-trained and prepared, and has a great public image and is well-respected in the town. I hope you feel this way too. To former Town Administrator David Colton and the Select Board back in 2012, who selected me and hired me to be their Fire Chief, thank you for having the confidence in me and appointing me your Fire Chief. I'm very thankful and sincerely appreciate it. The first person to welcome me here in the Fire Department was Chief Stone, the former chief. I thank him for his support in welcoming me and providing a smooth transition for me and supporting me over the years. It's never easy to come from an outside department to take over as a chief, and he was very helpful. Pam Burgland, my administrative assistant, was also very welcoming. I want to thank her for her support over my time here in Easton. She has been terrific assistant and very supportive. She has also done an outstanding job in helping, helping me to manage the SERC team, which we started five years ago. I thank her for all her support and for the excellent work that she does. To my SERC team members, my personal thanks to each of you for volunteering to support the town through SERC. You are truly wonderful people. I'm very glad we had the chance to work together and develop an excellent SERC team. I'm honored to work with you, and thank you all. I have to go a little ways back to 1986, the time when I walked into the Berkeley Fire Department and met the now-late Fire Chief Jim Barrow. It was on a Friday that I walked in, who hired me as a firefighter EMT, and I started on the Monday, three days later. I thank him, he started my career. In 1993, when several members of the Berkeley Board of Selectmen took a chance in appointing the 27-year-old kid, as I was referred to, as their Fire Chief, I have to thank George Matoza and the late Selectman John Holland, two members of the board who selected me as the Fire Chief. They opened the doors for me to a wonderful career that I've had. I thank, I thank them for giving me the opportunity. Being a Fire Chief for so many years has given me the opportunity to meet so many other Fire Chiefs over my 22 years as a chief. To my fellow Fire Chiefs, for the many years I had the pleasure to work with you, many retired now, some no longer with us, thank you for being a true friend and for all the support. Sometimes the Fire Chiefs alone, between the men and the Board of Selectmen, and we reach out to each other all the time to help, help each other. Several people, including Chief Ken Galligan, retired from Brockton, Steve Revad, retired from Somerset, Chief Dick Wetter, retired from Hingham, and the late Captain Alwild from Swansea, were all mentors for me and confidants. They were always very helpful in my career. People that you can just pick up the phone and ask them anything, and they were there to help you. My first Fire Chief was the late James Eddy from Swansea Fire Department, was my very first chief, and was supportive of me and encouraged me to go to firefighter 12 training school in Rhode Island. And in 1985, I did that, and I was hooked. I wanted to be a firefighter full-time. And then the late Chief James Barrow was my first full-time Fire Chief, who taught me a lot and let me attend many classes, took and take on a lot of responsibility, which led me to become a leader of that department. To my supportive family, my lovely wife Janet, my two sons. John. John and Nick, I love you all. I thank you for all your support. And understanding during my time as a fire chief. There were many times I could not be somewhere with you due to my obligation. Whether it was a meeting, fire, training, conference, or a storm, or COVID nineteen, uh, or other commitment that I had. You're very special to me, and I thank you, love you. Once again, to Connor, the select board, I'd like to thank you all for your unwavering support and confidence in me over the years. To my fellow department heads. The job was and is not always easy. But coming to work every day and working with amazing people like you truly made the job worth it. Is a pleasure to serve the community and work with all of you. I wish the Eastern Fire Department. And all the Eastern firefighters the very best to have a happy and safe career. I, I thank God for all my blessings, and I wish you all the very best. God bless you all. Thanks.
Thank you, chief. We're gonna, um, have a couple of comments from each of the select board members now, starting with Craig.
Thank you, Dottie. Chief, as, as a, uh, as a retiree of six years. Um, I, I'm glad to hear that you're gonna hang around with us for a little while longer as part of the transition. After about a year of retirement, I got, I got bored and I started to get involved, and that's how I ended up on the select board. I want to take you back to two thousand and sixteen. When I was running for select board. And I made an appointment with, with you and Gary and David to come out and talk about what you guys did. Um, and it just so happened that you and I share a friend. Um, who I spoke to briefly before I went into your office. Uh, who's a psychologist, um, who works with first responders. Both outpatient and inpatient in a facility that he's got in central Massachusetts. And he couldn't say enough good things about you, so that it made my entrance into your. Um, office and the friendship that we developed over the years. Very easy because we, we shared a very close friend, uh, who had nice things to say about both of us. So, um, I wish you well in retirement. Um, I look forward to seeing you over the next six or eight months. And I thank you for what you've done, not only for the, for the department, but for the town of Eastern. Thank you very much, chief.
Thank you, Craig. I remember that day. And that conversation.
Chief, uh, if it was the fact that Connor spoke so much with you over these last six months, that was the push over the edge. Just want you to know you could have always talked to us about that. Um, but Connor did lean in pretty heavy that, uh, he was really hitting you up pretty hard. And obviously with good reason, given everything that we've got going on. Um, I, I can't approach the level of commentary from your peers, your coworkers, your team members, your leadership. Um, but I can point out the words like honor, privilege. The kindness and the respect you show and always trying to do what's right. Um, those are words that don't come easy to everybody, and you wear them incredibly well. And I think everybody else can probably attest to that far better than I can. Um, normally I would have a lot of data points, but Connor, of course, took all the good ones and. Took that out of the, the win, but I will say this. You know, for eight years, uh, or a hundred and three months. Or over three thousand days, you woke up and worked tirelessly to keep us safe. And, uh, for that, I'm just tremendously appreciative. I know the type of sacrifice it takes. Um, for a leadership of so many people on this call. Um, and certainly for, uh, the positions of public safety. Where you genuinely, I believe, wake up every day, making sure the people underneath your net, so to speak, are kept safe. And so, three thousand plus days is a lot of days to do that. So, thank you. Um, and, and lastly, just know that we're so appreciative of. The efforts that you made for us and the sacrifices that you and your family have made for us. Um, all the great work you've done building an incredible team. Um, I hope you enjoy your retirement in good health and enjoyment. Uh, you have reminded me how far I have to go, uh, so, uh, for that, you can buy me lunch too, I guess. That's going around. Um, but please don't forget us and know that we would never forget you, and we'll always be appreciative for everything that you've done for us. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. I appreciate it.
Thanks. Tom, you're up, Chuck.
Chief, I, uh, as with Tom, it's tough to follow. Many or any of the testimonials that have been given for you tonight. And including your own, and, um. I would follow up with Tom's extent, usually extensive data. And say I would even attach to those days and months, the hours. Because what you've given me and what people like Kristen have given me this evening is. A real vision, heartfelt, felt vision of the twenty-four-seven nature of your job. When I think of your service. My thoughts will be on your professionalism. Consistently seeing you at town events and town-related events. Such as the renovations to Station Two, the SEMREC planning for regional dispatch, you've always been pleasant to meet with. As pleasant as you are, word is that you are as persistent as could be with regard to the safety of your troops and of the community. You chased after grants with a passion, including the safer grants, including one for seniors, among many. You fostered a wonderful sense of community. Community involvement, including a fire department open house. And a smoke detector campaign for the Stonehill students and much, much more. Your planning for disasters has been a huge plus, including working with others for a town shelter. Planning for regional dispatch and PPE for your own personnel and much more. All of this, you did with an air of humility and being down to earth. I will, I will miss all that you have offered to this town and wish you a very happy and well-deserved retirement.
Thank you, Chuck. I appreciate that.
Mark.
Congratulations, chief.
Thank you.
Those statistics that Connor put up earlier, from when you started back in two thousand eleven, two thousand twelve. From where you came from, from two thousand eleven to now, uh, those statistics say it all. Um, you know, to have that much change. I would think is there's like four chiefs in between that, but there was just one. It was just you. Uh, so, uh, what you accomplished, bringing it from two thousand eleven to where it is today, it came at an incredible sacrifice. In your life, uh, you sacrificed a lot to serve this community, to genuinely serve this community. You know, you hear the testimony of the people you work with, and, um, you have served this community. The town of Eastern is, is no question better off for you having served it, uh, and done well, brought it to where it is. You know, uh, in talking with some of the guys, it, one of the things they would say is he's Johnny on the spot. No matter what's going on in the town, you turn around, he's there, like he's just always there. So, uh, it caught us laughing because he knows it's true. Um, but yeah, that was, that was, uh, uh, your reputation. So, um, congratulations. Thank you for all you've done for the community. This community is better off for you. Uh, enjoy your family, enjoy your wife, uh, enjoy whatever is the next chapter. You deserve all of it.
Thank you very much, Mark. Appreciate it.
And so my comments are, um, you know, you've been the fire chief the whole time that I've been elected. And when I first ran for election, that was one of the biggest concerns in the community is how are we gonna recover from the recession and bring back the staffing? Um, you've done an amazing job with that and everything that everybody else has mentioned and, and on Connor's extensive list. Of accomplishments, but when I think of you, I think of how professional you are, how compassionate you are. How fierce you are in protecting the people that work with you, um, your, your staff, the firefighters, always advocating for them. Really relentlessly, um, to make sure that they have the equipment and the tools to keep them safe, to keep the community safe. I think of the times that you've gotten, um, a new fire truck or a new ambulance. Uh, how exciting that is, how excited you were to show it to the board, even though you wouldn't let me ride or drive the fire truck. But, um, you know, the, the, um, the times that you've been at the different events, like the firehouse, open house. And to see how happy you are, so proud of your team, um, the, the little kids that come in, those are really exciting things. Um, also. The work that you've done for the community in areas that people don't realize. Um, the work that you did with the Substance Use Coalition when Wings of Hope first started. Um, you, you were a tremendous impact on that. And a lot of people probably don't know that you've done so many things that people don't realize. Um, when other communities need help, you're the first one to reach out. Um, for statewide disaster, you're the person that people call. So, you know, to round up, uh, my comments on you, I would just say. You know, you're somebody that can, everybody can depend on. You've always been there for us. The board has always felt confident in the things that we've done to support the, the whole department. Uh, because of your leadership and because we know how strong your leadership is. And I just want to wish you, uh, an amazing, um, retirement. I hope you will be back to visit. I look forward to working with you in the last few months that you're here, and we're just grateful for everything that you've done for our community. So, congratulations.
Thank you, Dottie. It really has been a pleasure.
So, now that we've all firmly established that Kevin is, uh, the best of us. The next part of this item is to talk about what the next, um. Oh, I don't know, uh, nine months look like. Um, always devoted, uh, to his duty and to the town. The chief's not, um, saying October twenty-first is my last day goodbye. He has generously offered, uh, to stay on as an interim chief. While the town does the necessary work to conduct. Uh, a dual assessment center for both the, a permanent fire chief, but also a deputy chief. So quite a significant task of selecting the leadership for, um, the fire department moving into the future. So, I've laid out in your packet. Uh, or the chief and I together have laid out for the board in your packet, a summary of major milestones between now. And next spring, um, if all goes according to plan. You know, uh, something, Dottie, you use the phrase business continuity. All the time, I think, from your experience in the private sector, that's something that we have, uh, really prioritized and worked into the town's ongoing. Goals and objectives and planning. I think everyone's, uh, testimony tonight, uh, speaks to the, uh, incredible importance of our department head. Uh, department head's leadership responsibilities, and so it's on me and on the board to make sure that we have a good plan in place. When something as significant as a retirement occurs, that we have a good handoff, uh, to the future leadership. Uh, of the department, uh, for the sake of the department and for the sake of the community. And so, the chief and I pulled together, uh, a roadmap, uh, of what we will be looking at in the next few months. And so I'll just kind of hit them the major points, and if the board has any questions, I'm happy to, to answer them. The chief can, uh, help me with that as well. Obviously, tonight is the first step of that transition plan, and it's the formal announcement of the chief's intent to retire, uh, from his permanent position on October twenty-first. On tonight's agenda also, if the board is willing to execute it, uh, is a, uh. Agreement with Kevin, uh, to stay on board as an interim fire chief. Uh, starting the day after his retirement begins through June of next year. Uh, to see to the successful transition of key leadership in the department, uh, specifically of a permanent fire chief. Uh, as well as the concurrent process of the assessment and appointment of a deputy. Uh, if the board, everything flows from the assumption that the board is, uh, willing to, to move forward with the interim agreement. Um, so I'm gonna carry on with that theme, but, uh, from, from tonight, assuming the chief is staying on as the interim to help, help me out. He and I will solicit, uh, assessment center, uh, proposals. So in, uh, fire service as well as in police service, it's quite common, um. Through, uh, when you're doing an executive search process, that you work with a consulting firm. Of human resource and fire, uh, professionals to, uh, create what's called an assessment center. That puts applicants through a rigorous process, uh, role play. Uh, leadership analysis, panel interviews and things of that nature to supplement the normal interview process, um, because of how critical these roles are. Uh, the Eastern Fire Department, the chief is not civil service, the deputy is, so the assessment processes are slightly different. Uh, chief, is that fair? But largely in the big picture, the goal is the same, is to create a rigorous. Uh, process, a rigorous and competitive process, uh, for folks.
That is correct.
So, we will get to work on that now. Uh, and then September through November, uh, the, the chief and I will review and finalize assessment center agreements. We will, uh, solicit, um, and conduct a, a public executive recruitment for a fire chief. Um, it's a non-civil service position. It's a critical part of a town's leadership. Uh, as someone who had to compete for a top job, uh, in this town, I think it is in the interest of the community to have a competitive process. But I also, of course, and the chief believes this as well, would extend the invitation to members of the department to participate in that as well. Um, but I am a firm believer that it, for, for roles of this stature, it's critical that we do, uh, a thorough public executive search. The deputy chief position is civil service, and so that will follow that statutory process concurrently. Around the holidays, November and December, uh, we would hope to start, uh, and actually do the, conduct the assessment center. It's usually a three to four week process, both the chief and the deputy. Uh, will review, uh, those results, conduct additional screening, uh, if necessary. Uh, hopefully by January, we will be making a permanent appointment of a deputy. Uh, and then hopefully by February, uh, I will appoint. Uh, the chief partridge's permanent successor and bring that person forward to execute an employment agreement. With the select board. If this timeline works out, um, exactly according to this plan, that would leave a few months where we would have the ability to have a handoff. With the chief as interim, uh, with a, you know, the ability to do a nice, solid transition of the department, which is important. If you'll recall, uh, in Dave Field's department, we just did a similar leadership transition. Uh, when longtime operations manager Jack Marsh, uh, exited into his well-earned retirement. We had a, a, a period of, uh, a few months of overlap between his permanent successor and Jack Marsh to make sure that the handoff was as smooth as can be. So that's a rough outline. Obviously, it's conditional on a variety of things, applicant, it's a number of applicants. And if, if we diverge from that significantly, I'm, I'll be sure to update the board, but that's, that's generally the roadmap. Chief, is, did I miss anything? Anything you want to add to that?
Nope, that summed it up pretty good.
Right. Um, so, Dottie, I'd be happy to answer any questions from the board, if, if there are any.
Um, Craig, do you have any comments or questions?
I, I think it's a, an excellent plan, um, and, and I, I appreciate what the chief and Connor put together. Excuse my voice, I'm losing it every once in a while. Um, I think it's important to have that transition. Uh, to be helpful to the department and to the new chief coming in.
Well thought out and very much appreciated, uh, as, as expected, great work and, and very thoughtful.
I agree with, uh, I echo the previous comments, and I have nothing additional to add.
All attainable plan.
I'm sorry, I froze for a minute there. Mark, did you already?
My, my only comment was, it's a solid and attainable plan, and thank you for putting it together.
And, uh, we appreciate that you're willing to work through this transition plan with us, chief. Um, it is really important, like Connor said, business continuity is always something that I think of. Um, you know, there's, there's a lot at stake here, and when you look at the list of the things that you do, um, we need to make sure that we don't. Um, rush into, to something quickly. We need to make sure that we have the best person for the job. And, uh, your help with that is gonna make it a lot easier for us, so we really appreciate that.
My pleasure.
All right. Well, thank you, and I, I really want to thank, um, all your colleagues for being here tonight. I hope it was a nice surprise. This is your life, and, um, you know, it's, it's just. It makes me just so happy and so proud to work with such a great team, to hear all the comments, um, from each of you. And I hope none of you get any ideas, just because, um, there's one retirement, we want to keep the rest of you around for a little while, so. We appreciate it.
Thank you all.
Thank you. Here's chief.
Well, I know that you love being at select board meetings, but if you don't have to or don't want to stay for the rest of it. This is a great opportunity for you to, um, to carry on and check out for the night. Thank you, everyone.
Bye, everybody. Bye. Thank you for coming.
So our, our next, uh, item is discussion of a special town meeting, um, to be determined in the November, December timeframe. And possible vote for, uh, in the November, December timeframe and possible vote for uh and to open the warrant.
Sure, thank you, Dottie. So uh if we can all collectively believe it, it is that time again, so soon. Just because of the select board schedule, you're not meeting again until September fourteenth after Labor Day. Uh I'm going to recommend that you vote to open a warrant for articles submitted now uh so that our office can just get the the paperwork going, uh basically, and get the get the docket going. We already are going to have quite a robust warrant, uh because as you'll recall, we trimmed down the annual town meeting warrant quite significantly in response to the special legislation uh that we used to call that meeting. So uh we will already have at this fall town meeting, the Community Preservation Act funding articles, which are significant, including renovations to the town offices exterior. Um we will have the zoning articles that the planning board has been working on uh throughout COVID uh and all of our other normal business that was not conducted in the spring, in addition to anything else that comes up. I anticipate that we will have uh, as I said back in the spring, uh meaningful budget adjustments in the fall uh based on revenue uh assumptions and other information. So it'll be a a busy town meeting, which is leads to my next point of why I did not and am not ready to at this point make a recommendation on location or venue. Because uh the gale and scope of the warrant will probably uh drive turnout, and we're going to need to make some um judgment calls on what we expect turnout to be and where we can have a safe town meeting. Because uh although the Commonwealth has done a really good job getting a a better grip on COVID uh than a lot of our peers at this point, um there's obviously still not a vaccine. And the measures that keep people safe involve being phased out and having masks, and it takes a a huge amount of space to do that when you have hundreds of people show up. So our team will work on that. But I I would ask, and I confirm with counsel, that it is acceptable and appropriate for the board to vote to open a special town meeting, a fall town meeting warrant. Uh and I would request, but if you do so, articles be submitted to our office no later than Tuesday, September twenty second. And uh I'm happy to answer any questions as well, if the board has any.
Any comments or questions from the board? Okay. Uh Craig, would you like to make the motion in the packet? Do you have that handy?
No, I don't. I'm sorry.
Okay, I can, I could do it. I propose that the select board open the warrant for a special town uh meeting at a date, time and location to be confirmed um at a later date, and I'm proposing that the warrant articles be submitted to the town administrator's office no later than Tuesday, September twenty second. Could I get a second?
Second, Craig Barger.
And a roll call vote.
Barger, yes.
Bruce Sard, yes.
King, yes.
Lamb, yes.
Full Janetti, yes. Okay, great, thank you. Um next is the standing COVID update.
Uh sure, thank you, Dottie. So this is a slightly shorter update than is typical. We abbreviated it a little bit. But as is our practice, we just keep it on the agenda in the event that anything major is changing. Um so EMA, most of whom were just on this call, still uh connect three times a week uh to make sure that we have good communication flowing between public safety, public health and the schools. Um COVID continues to grow in the United States. Uh the daily, the trend right now is moving in a better direction. Uh we're no longer in the fifty and sixty thousand cases per day territory. The seven-day average is moving downward, which is good. Um however, we are nearing nearly a hundred and eighty thousand folks uh having uh tragically died of this. This is the state of affairs as far as the positive rate, uh which is a pretty good indicator of how much coronavirus is spreading in communities. The Northeast is doing uh the best in the United States, um which has been the case for quite some time. Uh the Commonwealth uh continues uh to do uh quite well, um hovering around a a couple hundred cases a day. Which is actually rather impressive when you account for the fact that testing has increased dramatically recently with the return to schools for colleges and universities conducting thousands of tests. Um that's going to be a real pressure test for the public health system in the state, uh seeing how our universities um perform in the coming weeks. We touched on this last time. I won't uh belabor it. Uh I think, I hope folks are aware of Governor Baker's travel orders. Outdoor gatherings are still limited to fifty, indoor to twenty five. Commonwealth has established a variety of uh mechanisms for folks. If they are concerned with a business that they are a patron of, not following uh COVID procedures, not having masks, things of that nature, they can report that to the state, gets routed to local boards of health. Uh the state's establishing a COVID enforcement and intervention team there to ramp up enforcement efforts. Uh so Easton's cases, uh we pull from the weekly dashboard from DPH now. The Department of Public Health has a really, really robust community by community um uh data portal now. Uh so we're hovering just over three hundred cases. And we've uh had thirty-five residents pass away as of the end of July of coronavirus. One of the things that's helpful in the new DPH uh dashboard that we're all keeping an eye on is that they build into it for all three hundred and fifty-one cities and towns, uh certain trend analytics as far as uh whether your case positivity rate is growing on a bi-weekly basis as well as what your per capita transmission rate is. Those are important metrics that uh people like me and Kristen and Kevin keep an eye on uh to uh track whether or not there's any kind of increasing spread or whether things are staying largely uh under control. So um we, right now, uh actually, as I speak, I'm kind of hiding in the back of the town hall because there is uh early voting going on in the front part of it, uh which has been the case since Saturday. Town offices are quite busy inside, uh despite being closed to walk-ins uh due to the significant uh expanded voting opportunities for folks uh in the Commonwealth in response to COVID. People have been sending in their mail uh requests. We have a safe and secure ballot drop box that's clearly marked right in front of the town offices. Uh it's distinguished from a post office, looks like American flag. It's a nice patriotic uh drop box for you. And uh right now, through the end of this week, Friday, there is early voting for the September first primary. That will again pick up in October, when there will be two weeks of early voting um for the November presidential election. I encourage folks uh to visit the town's website, click the giant vote banner. Uh the town clerk Danielle Sicard has done a really, really good job pulling together a a pretty exhaustive guide uh for voters who have three options of participating, either voting by mail, voting early or voting in your traditional polling place on Election Day. So again, I would encourage people to go to the town website and click the giant vote banner. All the information you should need to safely participate uh is available for you there. Uh the town will be rolling out uh a process for in-person appointments for services that can't be delivered remotely uh shortly after Labor Day. Um that should be live on our website by the time we have our next meeting, uh at which point I could go into that in further detail. Uh and other than that, our other uh safety and public works operations are functioning at normal uh capacity, so. That's, that's what I have for the municipal side. Obviously, the schools are incredibly busy um right now, preparing uh for the fall. They've been working around the clock. Our folks have been interfacing with them where we could be helpful, public works. Um I don't know if Dave is still here, but they deserve a shout out. They've been helping with ventilation and any number of things with building preparedness, which is no small task. So uh, you know, trying to really keep a good team effort going as we continue to try and keep our eye on the ball here. So I'm happy to answer any questions um if the board has any.
Any questions from the board? Well, thank you very much. It's uh, it's been a long journey, and I feel like we're, just when we think we're settling into a process, more things pop up for us that that have to be addressed on an administrative level. So we really appreciate all the work that you you and your team are doing on that, Connor. Um the next items, items five and six, uh I'm going to skip over those, go to seven, eight and nine. And then um we'll vote to enter into an executive session to return back to open session to um talk about five and six. So um town administrator notes, did you have anything else you wanted to add, Connor?
I do not.
Okay, select board notes. Greg? Um Tom?
I have none.
Chuck?
I have none.
Mark? Um I just wanted to mention that August thirty first is International Overdose Awareness Day. So um the Substance Use Coalition that works with the town, East and Wings of Hope, will be um having some information on their social media about that, um since there is not really a great opportunity to do things in person. Um and just want to take a second to just um reflect on on the people that we've lost in our community due to substance use disorder and to thank um our first responders and all of those, um including the folks at Wings of Hope that have come together to try to support the families and those people in need. Um so every August thirty first, um we take a look at that. So thank you to everyone. Um if anyone would like to make a motion to accept the minutes of July thirteenth and August tenth?
Moved, Barger.
Second, Bruce Sard.
Greg and Tom, and a roll call vote?
Barger, yes.
Bruce Sard, yes.
King, yes.
I think that was a Mark mouth, mouth guess. You're on mute.
Yes, sorry.
And Full Janetti, yes. Um I'd like to uh make a motion to enter into executive session under purposes two and three of Mass General Law, Chapter Thirty A, Subsection Twenty One A, to discuss strategy with respect to non-union personnel or contract negotiations with non-union personnel, Kevin Partridge, and to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining with the Eastern Patrol Officers Association and Eastern Police Supervisors Association. And that will be a motion to enter into executive session to return to open session. Can I get a second?
Second, Craig Barger.
Greg's second, and a roll call vote?
Barger, yes.
Bruce Sard, yes.
King, yes.
Lamb, yes.
Full Janetti, yes. And just as a technical aspect, um Connor, are we logging out of this and then logging into the other meeting?
Yes, so you you each of the board members should leave this meeting. Mike will leave a, we'll be back placard on screen. Uh there is a separate, secure uh executive meeting that you were provided. We'll go into that. Once that is concluded, you will exit that and you will rejoin this. So um everyone should leave, was the short version of that, yes.
Okay, great.
Just remind me, please, do we log back in with the same ID number?
Oh, well, that's finished.
When we come back to open session, you'll just click the same link on the agenda that brought you into this one.
But I meant going into the executive session, do we use the same ID number?
No, you have, you had two calendar invites. Um if you look on your calendar, one will show you the executive session information.
Okay. From Mike Blanchard.
Yep.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Just like magic.
You still have attendees.
Sorry, what'd you say?
That's just an observation.
Waiting on Chuck.
Who's, um, Joe Borman?
Ecap.
Why is Joe a present- a panelist?
Right? He always is.
No, he's usually an attendee.
I always see him in there. It's at some point at the start of meetings. Or very often, anyway.
I think I see Chuck and the guests.
There he is.
I'm here, thank you.
See ya, Chuck.
Just for the record, to do a roll call back, we have Craig, Tom, Chuck, Mark, and myself coming back to our public session. In our executive session, we had a unanimous vote to execute a memorandum of agreement between the town and the Patrol Officers Association changing an educational program, effective date of fiscal year 20 instead of fiscal year 19. We also had a unanimous vote to execute an employer agreement with Chief Partridge for interim fire chief services effective October of 2021, I'm sorry, 2020 to June 30th of 2021. So, thank you very much for all of your hard work in the executive session, and with that, I would take a motion to adjourn.
So moved, Barger.
Second, Bruce Harden.
Barger, Bruce Harden. Craig, starting with you, roll call vote.
Barger, yes.
Bruce Harden, yes.
King, yes. I am, yes.
Full Janetti, yes. Thanks so much, everyone. Have a great night. See you in a couple of weeks.
Stay safe, everybody.
You too, thank you.